All right. Good evening and welcome, school board candidates, students, teachers, and parents to Carney High School. I'm Jacob Dillon, senior at Carney High School, involved in National Honor Society, track and field, football, and the senior representative for student advisory. The Board of Education plays a sizable role in the community, and the decisions that they make impact us as students here in Carney School District. Although many students cannot vote, we are determined and eager to be a part of the process to learn about some of the candidates running for these positions. We would like to thank all the candidates here tonight, all board members donate their time and make decisions for our school community, and we are grateful for all they have done for our district and all they will do for our district. Emmy Gates will begin by reviewing the format for tonight's program.
Hi, I'm Emmy Gates. I'm a senior here at KSD. I'm a member of the soccer team, a member of Student Council, and a senior representative on student advisory. I first just want to thank all of you for being here. As a member of the student body, I can say that I, along with the rest of the students, appreciate your contribution to making the school a better place. With all of that being said, let's begin. This program will consist of opening statements from each candidate and a series of questions for the candidates. The purpose of this format is to allow candidates to comment on areas of interest for those in our student body and for the citizens of Carney. The program has not been designed for audience-generated questions or for the candidates to engage in dialogue with one another. Instead, our goal is to provide a forum for candidates to clarify their positions on a number of key educational issues and for audience members to listen carefully. We ask each candidate to remain respectful of moderators and other candidates. Candidates must only respond when directed to do so by student moderators. All candidate responses will be timed, and you will be limited to 90 seconds for your response. Each candidate will have an opportunity to respond to each question. We ask that the audience in attendance to remain respectful and to remind each other of the audience to refrain from participation and engagement in candidate responses and student moderator questions. No new questions will be asked after 7:30; however, all candidates will be able to respond to the current question. The order of speaking will begin with Mr. Cook, and we'll move from left to right down the candidates. This is the order we will follow for the remainder of tonight. Each candidate will have 90 seconds to answer each question; however, we will start by allowing each candidate three minutes to deliver an introductory speech addressing the prompt. Okay. So why are you seeking a seat on the Board of Education for the Carney School District? Mr. Cook, the time is yours.
Well, I think the reason I'm here, first of all, I think that the school district, people move here for the schools, in my opinion, and I think as a business owner, one, if the town isn't growing, my business doesn't grow. Two, my wife is a teacher here in Carney, so is my mother-in-law, is a para. I've put one kid through the district, have a sophomore here as well. And I think that, you know, if we don't, if we don't take care of these things, if we don't, I think I've got more of a rounded side of, or a rounded reason to run with all of that. Because, like I said, if this doesn't grow, if this doesn't flourish, there are multiple things in this town that won't, and I think that's a very important, important thing for us to take care of.
Thank you for your introductions. The next question will begin... Oh, sorry.
Well, I want to thank everyone for being here as well. My reasons for running are more to bring more transparency, more community engagement. I don't particularly want to impose anything, I believe. I have my beliefs, but I don't want to bring them to the forefront. I would rather take the community's engagement and give their, I want to be their representative. I'm a transplant, I've been here for 14 years, my wife's employed by the school system, my daughter's at the junior high, I have a vested interest in the schools, I would love to see them flourish, bring more diverse curriculum in. But for most part, for me, it would be more transparency financially and what the school district is doing for the public.
Well, first of all, I just want to thank Emmy and Jacob for doing this, thank you guys for putting this on, thank the high school, this is, you know, it is important to, it's important to be a voter, it's more important to be an informed voter. So thanks for this opportunity to talk to others who are looking to learn more. My why is actually just sitting right down here in the third row, and that's my second grader and my fourth grader, who I've just thoroughly embarrassed. And so I'm running because they're in school, and I want to make sure that we continue to have a great school here in Carney. You know, whenever you talk to people, they will tell you the reason they moved to Carney is because it's got a great school system. It doesn't matter if that was 30 years ago or last year, you hear that repeatedly. So that's a big part of it. When I've, I'm not, I always make sure to tell people, I'm not mad about anything. Sometimes people run for school board because they're mad about something, and I'm not that. What I have told people is, when they say, "What are you interested in?", and I say, you know, one of, some of the reasons I'm running is because I want to make sure we keep our kids safe, and I know we'll talk about that at some point during this forum. I want to make sure that we keep our good teachers here. It's one thing to attract teachers, we also need to do a good job of retaining them. And then I also just want to make sure someone is providing transparency and fiscal responsibility with the budget. So look forward to your questions tonight, thanks for having us.
Well, again, thank you Emmy and Jacob for this opportunity this evening and for those that are here. And very similar, my name is Christina Lindsay, and my husband and I moved to Carney for the schools. So we had our oldest, which is now 13, when she was going into elementary school, we had to make that difficult decision, where do we want to put our roots down and where do we want to stay? And after researching and looking into all the schools, we decided this was the best fit. And actually, all of our extended family actually followed us here as well. And there's a lot of positive things about this school district, but there's also a lot of things that are being, the school districts are being faced with in the future with a lot of changes and decisions that are being made at the federal and the state level. I think overall, for me, I have four children. My oldest, which is 13, she's in seventh grade, getting ready to go into eighth next year. Two of them that are in elementary school, and then a two-year-old who is going to be her, and this is also his future. And how do I help continue to support them? And how do I help support the school district and the community in making this the best school and the best community for those that are coming here? I think if you look at the school district, they had a five-year plan made back in 2022, and a lot of those same things are still on the forefront today, safety, security, how do we have transparency and communication? And how do we make sure that we have the best teachers and the staff? And I would say I want to continue those focuses and make sure that those stay at the forefront of our priorities as a school district and as a community.
Thank you all for your introductions. The next question will begin with Mr. Hickey. With the 19th Street interchanged and proposed housing developments within the school district, what plans would you have to accommodate the district's future growth?
From what I understand, there is two new subdivisions slated to go in out there. There's an industrial park out there, the 19th Street overpass gets used a lot, I didn't think it would at first. It's going to be a challenge to expand the footprint of the bus routes, the size of the subdivisions that are slated are quite large. But it's bringing tax bases into the city that's going to help, and the tax dollars on the referendum budgets, that will help with the growth of our buildings, the growth of our teachers. The 19th Street overpass is a large change for Carney, the old one. Entrance town is no longer... As long as we can keep our security up and keep our kids safe, I think it's just going to be a good growing, good growing pain to have.
Thank you. Mr. Clint, we're up to you.
Thanks. I think it's important to, so Carney is growing, that doesn't necessarily mean that the school district is growing. Christina and I served on the boundary committee where we redrew the elementary boundaries, and so we had the demographer come in and talk of us. One of the more interesting stats that I heard was that 52% of the people who are moving to Carney are 65 and older. Those are not folks that are bringing kids with them. And so we need to make sure we understand what type of growth is coming to Carney and that we plan for that. I think the best thing we can do is keep in touch with those that are actually doing the building out there. You can pull the city permits, you can also talk to the builders, they know what's coming, they know what subdivisions are coming. I was talking with some folks at lunch today that one of the things they're waiting on out here is a water pipe to be extended before they can start the subdivision. So understanding what kind of growth there is, but then just staying, make sure we're staying in tight communication with those who are actually doing the building and the planning so that we can stay ahead of that growth.
Thank you. Ms. Lindsay?
Yeah, like Jason said, we did have that opportunity to sit on the boundary committee, and it was very enlightening because we do see a lot of the growth and the developments happening, but with that, like he said, the demographic age is increasing and also children are having, or people are having less children. So with those two factors, we've seen and we're predicting that the numbers of growth for the school district is actually remaining flat. And so one of the commitments that we made on that committee was, how do we try our hardest to make a five-year commitment for the predicted growth based off of those permits that have been filed or that we're anticipating being filed? Because we all know that changes are difficult for everyone, they're difficult for children, they're difficult for parents and for the teachers and the staff. And so we made recommendations that were very difficult, but also making sure that they were around those five years. So I think if we look at the question of the future growth, I would say that the school district has done a phenomenal job of trying to evaluate what those future growths look like and how do we make sure that we're best set up for success, at least for the next five to 10 years.
Thank you very much. Mr. Cook?
I think the first thing is teacher retention and safety. That's a giant thing. We want the best teachers here to teach our kids, and we want to make sure that once we get them, we find ways to keep them. We want them to make this their home as well. And that's going to be, you know, being able to work with the city and provide, and the developers, and provide housing that they can afford. It's hard for them on, you know, beginning salaries, whether you're a teacher or just a young professional starting out, to afford to live here, and I think that's, that is important, to get in with the city, help them plan ahead, and to make those, you know, help make those tough decisions. The, the, the growth of this town, like Mr. Clint said, it is growing, and the age of the people that are moving here are, you know, beyond probably the years where they're going to have kids in this school. And so we need, I think we need to, as we grow, we need to be focused on the businesses that come in here as well to, to kind of help maybe take some of the burden off of the individual taxpayer. I think that's one thing that we're running into right now, we want safety, we want this, we want that, we want the best teachers, but we just haven't come up with a great way to do it where, that the people support. And I think it's, it's going to be important to, to get out with the, with the people in the city, engage with them, and see what, what kind of ideas they may have.
Thank you for your responses. The next question will begin with Mr. Clint. What safety precautions do you believe would be the most beneficial for the district to implement?
Yeah, no, thanks for that question. And I've talked a lot about this in, when I've talked to voters. Right now, we have seven schools, three administration buildings, 3,000-plus students, you know, upwards of 400, 500 staff, and we have two SROs for that. And I think that is embarrassing, to be honest with you. I think it is something that we need to really put a focus on, there's about a 10-minute response time on that, and so I think we need to, you know, we need to get more SROs. And I'll be happy to go through the budget line by line to find, find that, because we have to, budgets are about priorities. And so if that is a priority, then you have to figure out how to fund your priority. And so for me, I think it's one of those things that I think Carney is really falling behind on, and I think we can, I think we can get there. You know, the city has a Proposition A that will help with SROs, so we'll need to take a look at that. But either way, we're going to need to make that a priority and find the funds to get that done.
Go ahead. I would definitely say safety and what precautions do we have in place is a huge factor. And so I first want to commend the local law enforcement and their support. And so I know there's many mornings we pull up to those schools, and those are the first people that we see are those officers. And so I know that it's reassuring for myself and for my family. And, you know, two SROs or one SRO, which we have one budgeted and one support from the city, but I would say with that, how do we expand that? Because if there were something to happen, and even if we had more, I know there are the concerns that, you know, are they going to be there at the right time? But we want to make sure that we're setting ourselves up the best possible way. I think in addition to that is just spreading awareness. And so if something were to happen, does the staff, do the children, do they feel confident in what to do, where to go? And being personally involved in a situation, you really want to make sure that you're in this situation of, what do I do? And your mind kind of goes blank, and I want to make sure that it's repetitive, and we know exactly what that looks like, and we have that confidence in, in those procedures and those policies to make sure that we can keep everyone safe and that everyone in that building feels secure during those moments.
Thank you. Mr. Cook?
I think first is, we need a really good plan of action. We need to know what we need to do in those times, and so spending the time to put that together, which I'm sure, you know, the school does have. We do need more school resource officers, and we do have to figure out a way to do that, whether it's through the tax or whether it's through going through the budget and finding ways to do that. I'm sure that there's, there's excess in there that we could find to allow that to happen. You know, we've gone through, the schools had technology grants, having secure entrances and exits, the proper cameras, the, all, you know, whatever we can do to do that, I think, I think that is very, very important. And I think we underestimate the, the need for the, for the officers, and so I think it's going to be very important that, that the board, once this election happens, that we sit down and we, we do go through and take a, take an action of looking at exactly what goes in the budget and finding that.
Thank you.
I completely agree with the fact that we do need more SROs, but I understand budget constraints. We are currently in the process of upgrading buildings. Are we contemplating what could happen? And putting that as part of the construction upgrades? Are we adding the films to the windows? Are we adding more security to the back doors? Right now, we're making the front of the buildings look beautiful and more secure, but are we building a full-on plan from start to finish for the whole building? Because right now, with only having two SROs, the only security is that building around our kids. So if we could put together an actual job plan that would show each building needs this, each principal needs this training, each gym teacher needs this training, and here's what we're going to do while we're waiting for our SRO, and the building is capable of protecting us this long, then we know exactly how many SROs we need. But yeah, the budget has to be looked at tight and clean up the excess and probably be able to afford a couple more SROs. It would be great to have four, but we still have 10 total buildings, so let's just put a plan together and everybody work together.
Thank you all for your responses. Mrs. Lindsay, we'll begin with you. The levy increase to help raise staff compensation and additional funding for the district failed in August of 2023. Do you believe this is an important issue for the district? If so, what ideas would you present in order to help a similar levy pass in the future?
I absolutely do believe it's an important event, and if we think about what we're faced with coming up with the freezing of taxes for those that are 62 and older, that is going to have a huge impact on our budget, and I-
They say if there is a tax increase for schools, seniors pay it.
Excuse me, this is a no audience participation. Thank you.
That's okay, no, I appreciate that. But I, oh, no, it's okay. So if we, if we think about the levy and what happened at that point in time, I think talking to board members and being in different discussions at the board meetings, there was a lot of conversation of how do we do public education, how do we make sure that we're communicating, being transparent about what is up for voting, and making sure that we're having a kind of a communication drive to be able to get that information out there. It's an absolutely important resource for our schools, for that, for our teachers to be able to retain and to be able to acquire top talent within the schools, but then also for those security issues that we just talked about. So we are faced with, you know, things in the future, and we're going to have to figure out how do we communicate around those. So we are having the freezing of taxes, but it does sound like if we were to make changes with the school district that that would still increase the school funding. So those are all things that we have to educate the public with as, as we have those conversations, and if there is a future change or proposition that's going to be placed on the ballot.
Thank you. Mr. Cook?
I think first of all, engaging the public on that is super important because so many people that were on the forums with their complaints said, "I would have voted for it if, if I would have understood what it said. If it said this, why did it say that?" So that, we need to, you know, for them to understand why the language says the, the things that, the way, the way it does, and, and be able to get out there and address them. Yeah, we can go to this, you know, they can go to the school board meetings, and they can sit and listen, and they can try to figure it out, but if we as a district and as a board would work a little harder to set up some more, maybe town hall-style question-answer sessions or different things like that, we could, we could probably help some of those pass. I also think we need to look at maybe restructuring the pay scale for the teachers, because certain, certain groups may, may not benefit from the, you know, being here early. So we want young, great teachers, but we have to be able to retain them through matching them on the pay structure scale. And I don't think at this moment that, that scale really benefits them, and so I would, I would look to, to try and fix that or to help fix that.
Thank you.
The reason I feel the bill failed last time was they put too much in it. I don't want to say it's the easy way out, but putting out a document that is hard to understand, that has so much in it, is very, very hard for just everyone to bother with. If we were to break them apart, do the work as the school board and do it individual, this bill is just for teachers' pay, this bill is just for this, and keep it as transparent as possible, I think it has a much, much better chance at passing. Once people understand each individual line item, they're usually for it, but when you have so many line items that it muddies the water up, it is what it is, that's all.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I voted in August of 2023, I did, I did vote for that, but I hope we learned the lessons, I think, of that campaign. And we mentioned a couple of them up here, the wording, I have talked to voters who were confused or thought that there weren't enough protections in it to make sure it was done. I thought the timing of it was odd. If you remember, it was in August, it felt rushed, and I think when voters feel rushed, I don't think they respond very well. We do need to make sure that we reach out, as it was mentioned down here, that we need to make sure seniors know that if they are, that if they do have their property taxes capped, that it's not going to be a tax increase on them. And so we're going to have to run an actual campaign. I think the days of just putting things on a ballot and assuming it will pass are over. I think the school board and all of us, I don't think it's just a school board, I think all of us are going to have to engage in an actual informational campaign so that folks know exactly what it is and why it's needed. And that transparency and that hard work are going to be what helps gets it passed.
Thank you. Mr. Cook, when looking at the school district's budget and financial situation, what are your priorities when it comes to spending money in the district?
I think first and foremost, we've mentioned it several times, it's the safety of our kids and our teachers. I think in a safe environment, our students will learn better, our teachers will educate them better, and, and if they don't feel safe, they won't, that, we won't accomplish that. I think second of all, we've hit it already as well, is the teacher pay and retention. We have to do the best we can to keep the teachers that, that, the quality teachers, and, and make them feel like they are, like they are needed. I think that, that is, those are the two big ones. I also think we need to look ahead because the school district will grow, the school, the city is growing, the school will grow. I think we need to make sure that we are on the forefront of, of, of the plan, what, what sort of buildings will we need, what sort of modifications will they need, what sort of changes to our facilities, whether they be, you know, inside here or athletically, do they need? Because this is a great place, and to continue to keep it the great place that we know and to keep people moving here, we need to provide them with that Carney school that they are accustomed to.
Thank you.
Number one priority would be, of course, school safety, keeping the kids safe. For me, number two would be the curriculum. I currently have, like I said, a daughter in the junior high who has dyslexia. I had to go to the state to get Carney to buy a program just to teach her because it needed to be done. Most people in this district don't know the new curriculum that is, that is out here within our district that they could utilize for their kids. I've talked to two or three different families that needed it, and they now get it. There is more curriculum out there than just the old school, here's your textbook, here's what you need to learn. Why can't we just get with all of the other districts? We tried the STEM program, that no longer, I don't believe is going to exist. And then keeping our budget as tight as possible at all times.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think budgets are about priorities, and so what are our priorities? And that's what you need to look to first. And so, you know, what I've talked about and what I think we've all talked about now is security, making sure that we are doing everything we can to keep our kids safe. And then I think my next priority is making sure that we're doing things that are impactful in the classroom. And that could be anything from teacher pay to supplies to training. I'm interested in spending money in the classroom and on our teachers, and making sure that our kids are learning and that they're well taken care of from that. So those would be my priorities for the budget.
Thank you.
I would say it's going back to that plan, and what are our focuses and how do we start there? And so we said, safety, security, making sure that our teachers, and we have quality teachers, and we can retain them, and let's start there and then work our way down with the budget that we have. If you look from, I looked at the annual survey from 2020 to last year, 2024, the cost per pupil went up about $1,000 a year. So the cost is going up, inflation's happening, and so our budget may be staying the same for most of that, so we have to be more fiscally responsible with the money that we have, and we're going to have to make some hard decisions. And that's really just starting from the top and working our way down with those priorities. And then as we get and run out of those funds, how do we make those decisions on what is important and what's not as important for the district?
Thank you all for your responses. The next question will begin with Mr. Hickey. What are the major facility priorities you see as needs in the district?
Did you say facility?
Facility priorities, yes.
Major facility needs, I have a different outlook than most people. I have a construction background from years ago, and when I see a, a district that has a single high school, a single junior high, and a single middle school, but we have five elementary schools, I still can't wrap my brain around why we keep adding on to each individual elementary school when we own property as the district around one of the buildings that could expand exponentially and become the singular, easy-to-secure. It's hard to put into words as far as- It's hard to put into words as far as facility-wise. I love that we have a great football field. I love that we have a just great amenities, period. A pool would be a nice thing to get for these kids, but that's a budget item that probably isn't going to come around.
Thank you.
You know, I think, again, security upgrades would probably be where I would start with facilities. I mean, I think we need to probably go back to our safety audits and see what things are needed and that can be funded. We always are going to need deferred maintenance, right? Buildings aren't getting any younger, so we need to make sure that we're keeping up on deferred maintenance. You know, when I look to the future, you know, the facility that stands out to me the most, and I have to say this because somebody's going to love it, I have not been in the middle school. So there's a chance that it's, that looks a lot better on the inside than it does on the outside. But it seems to me that that would be the facility that you would need to start looking at. I did have lunch today and I was told that it's well-built and the insides are, are amazing. So maybe I'm wrong, but those are the types of things that I think we need to look out. But yes, it's about planning for the future. We need to continue to think ahead, understand where our growth is, understand what those needs are so that we can plan and make smart decisions.
Thank you.
I have been in the middle school, so I think they do need a little bit of upgrades in there. But they did get new sixth grade bathrooms, I think, with the last levy that was passed. So if we think about that deferred maintenance and the facility priorities, so as we continue to bring on the amenities that we have, there's the maintenance piece to that. And so how do we make sure that those maintenance costs are in our budget and that we're not investing the money in these added things that look shiny and new, but we're able to maintain them and keep them at that same level ongoing? I think the other piece of that is there are several different security aspects that we can bring into play. I think someone mentioned cameras or different window securities and so forth. And are there things that we can add into the schools with the technology that's out there today to be able to ensure that the students and the staff feel safe? But also that is setting us up for success in the future for both growth, but then also making sure that we can maintain for those deferred costs that we're going to have ongoing.
Thank you.
I mean, we're basically going to repeat a lot of, of what each other said, I think, is, is because we are all on the same page of, of the secure buildings, technology upgrades, both for use in the classroom and for the safety of the kids. And I think utilizing some of the space in these buildings that, that may not be used. You know, from my understanding, in the middle school itself, there are places in there that aren't being used right now. And so, so what ways can we enhance the education process? What, what ways can we think outside the box in educating our kids to get them out of a classroom and out of their chairs? And, and, and utilize that money the best we can. Also, you know, I'm an athletic guy and, and I think, you know, Joe mentioned, our football field is great, minus the, the light pole that just fell down the other day. But, but I think there's, there's ways that we can, you know, a school this size shouldn't have one, one batting cage for their baseball and softball teams. We shouldn't have one place to practice for our track and our soccer and, and, and those teams that utilize that. We need, I think we need to start to think about using some of that, not only to use for our kids here in the school, but it could be used by the community as well. I think Excelsior Springs does a great job with using the facilities that they've gotten from their, from their tax dollars there to, to allow the city to use, whether it be the track, the football field, if you redo a baseball field. But, but I think there's a lot of different, different ways that we can use it. And I just think we need to be smart and sit down and figure out what's best at that time.
Thank you for all of your responses. Mr. Clint, we are back to you. In your opinion, what is the biggest non-financial issue in the district? And if elected, how would you address it?
I think, I think the biggest non-financial issue in the, in the district is really communication and transparency. I think that you continue to hear that from voters and just everyday parents that still, you know, and I wish I could find the Rosetta Stone for communication because, you know, Ray's back there. Ray does everything he can. I think this forum was on Twitter, Facebook, there was an email, I think there was a text message, and yet there'll still be people saying, "Oh, I didn't know that was going on." And so I, I think trying to understand how we can do a good job communicating with our, all of our patrons, whether they be parents or whether they just be community members, and making sure that we increase that transparency. If I could figure out how to do that, then I would have, really have accomplished something. But the only thing I will say is, Ray, if I hear your voice at five thirty on Thursday morning, I'm not going to be happy. I just, I just want to make sure that I say that now.
I would say one of the biggest non-financial issues that I have seen that I would love to bring to the table is we have done an amazing job as a school district focusing on those children that are really excelled and also those children that need a lot of help. But what about those kids that are trending in those directions? And how do we help the parents identify those and, and be able to build an action plan so we can prevent them from going down to that bottom or to getting too far behind? And so just making sure that we're continuing the focus on the individual needs of those children and building plans for them and that partnership with the parents and the community so we can continue to grow and have them be successful.
Thank you.
I think that mine is, I think we need to promote our kids. Use your Twitters, use your Facebook, use, or your, your Instagram, whatever it may be. Get out there and, and use that and promote the kids in the district and, and show the people kind of why, why we want to be here and why this is a great place. That in, in itself would, would help to increase some of that communication with the parents. It would help to increase the communication, as we talked about earlier, with the, the non-passing of the previous amendments that, that, uh, previous propositions that, that we tried to pass before. Engage with the community, you know, let the kids do it, make that part of, you know, maybe one of their classes. You know, have the board do it, have our admin do it. We, the, the more we communicate with each other and the, and the more that we are there to answer the questions that they have, I think is, will, will help propel us forward.
Thank you.
I completely agree with Mr. Clint. Transparency via communication. It is everything from the referendum that didn't get passed, having too much verbiage, to Ray's voice at five thirty in the morning. It could be kids, it could be a, a school-driven communication program. People may be more apt to look outside the box and think, "I'm going to listen to these kids talk because they're the ones that are there, they know what's going on." We could use our kids for that. The social media aspect of it is, I feel atrocious. Not on the school board part of it, but on the Carney groups that like to do nothing but bash. It does muddy the waters up greatly. I mean, it, it makes things look so bad. And if we could just keep it clean and everybody get involved and let their kids advocate for the schools, it would be a great thing.
Thank you for your answers. Mrs. Lindsay, what plans or efforts do you have to support and improve the mental health of our students? And how do you see the school board's role in addressing issues like stress, anxiety and access to mental, mental health resources for our students?
That's a great question. And I would say the first and foremost is letting our kids feel safe, that it's okay to bring these concerns forward. And so I think whether or not it be stress and anxiety, how do they have that comfort level to be able to go to those, the staff and the teachers to be able to bring that forward and then feel that it's in a safe environment? How do we also have the designated time that we can ask those questions? I know the school's working on surveys to be able to identify those students that maybe feel like they want to hurt themselves or cause harm to themselves. And so it's continually having conversations with the students, continually having conversations with the staff to be able to identify those who they feel that it is okay to bring those things forward. I think in addition to that, some kids have gone through traumatic events. And so maybe they're, they're like, "Okay, I'm, I'm scared of this." My daughter, for example, she's scared of helicopters that come over the, the, um, at recess. And what does she do if a helicopter comes over and how is that going to impact her based off of past incidents? And so it's really having those conversations with the teachers, the teachers opening up to say, "Hey, it's okay to have this, what can we do to support you?" Having the conversation with my daughter that this is what our plan of action is. So as long as they feel that support and we're providing those tools and resources to allow them to open up and continue every avenue possible to, to allow the students to feel that it's okay to bring those issues forward.
Thank you.
I think teachers and coaches are more than just that, right? They're, they're more than just the person you sit with for an hour or that you go to practice with and, and spend those two hours with. And I've seen that firsthand with, with my kids. They're, it's much deeper than that. They're more than that. And so I think we need to, to do something, we need to find ways to provide them the training to help deal with that. We need to have a great avenue set to, to help them deal with it, help, help the teachers get them to the, the students to the right place and, and for, and to make sure that every student feels important. Every student matters. You may not be the starting quarterback, you may not be the valedictorian, but you do matter. And, and we want everybody to feel safe, we want everybody to matter. And we want everybody to know that, that every day you walk in, you, you, people are glad to see you. And so I think it's important that, that the teachers and coaches and administration have, you know, four or five points of contact for each student when they walk in the door. Every day, somebody needs to say hello to you and ask how you are. And, and when that happens, smile at you because we don't know what goes on. We use this analogy in my office all the time. We don't know what goes on in the four walls of somebody's home or what kind of life they're leading. But in the, inside our office, for that twenty minutes that you're in that appointment, you are the most important person there and this is going to be the best part of your day. And I think we need to make sure that when those students come into these four walls, that this is the best part of their day, that they know they are going to be safe, they know that they're going to be listened to and people do really care about them.
Thank you.
Training for all of the staff. Everything from the janitor to the coach, to the lunch lady should be forefront for this. Every school building should have a small group of paid personnel that have a meeting regularly. In our company, we have safety meetings. We have designated people that discuss things that are going on, things they've seen. Everything should be kept confidential. But that kid that, the janitor meets at the door every morning to shake his hand and say, "How are you doing?" If he sees something with that, that would be a great thing to discuss on a Friday afternoon meeting with that small group of people that are all trained in kind. What better way to point out the possible kids that may harm themselves or may harm others before it happens? But it's going to take a plan and it would take a small school board to do it, to lay out the plan for the training and facilitating something along those lines.
Thank you.
Those are all great responses. And so I'm going last, so I'm going to try not to repeat all of them. But other than to say that I agree that resources and training are the key to that, having a culture where it's not seen as weak to, to raise your hand and say that something's wrong. But then this is also where it goes back to having great teachers. Great teachers aren't just the folks in the classroom who know algebra better than the next person. They're folks that care about kids. Our teachers care about kids. They're the ones that are going to notice when something is off. And they're the ones that are going to reach out hopefully to that child and, and try and, and get them some help if it's needed. So, you know, I think Carney is, is working on all those measures. I know that we got a, a lot of plans in place and that we have certainly the policies and the procedures. But I think it's continued of, continuance of resources and training and continuing to have a, a good culture and great teachers.
Thank you. Mr. Cook, what suggestions do you have to make KSD a more welcoming and inclusive culture to our diverse student population?
I think it goes back to partially what, what I said just on the question before. Every student, every student matters. Socioeconomically, whether you are up here or down here, you matter. And it's important and you can make a difference. I think that the diversity of, of the school isn't as, isn't as, as great as it is in some others. It, it's, and my son had mentioned that too when he went to college. And then he came back and he's like, "Wow, it's really different." There's so many other types of people and so many other, from, from so many other walks of life just on his football team that he plays on. And, and, and I think we need to make sure that we teach the, our kids respect for all of those. They need to, they need to respect where this person comes from just as much as they need to respect where you come from and your beliefs and everybody has a voice that matters. And if we listen to them, if we listen to each other through that, I think that, that will help. That will, I think if we listen more and talk less, that's a, that's a big, big thing to teach our kids.
Thank you.
I'm all for talking less. It's, it is, back to the last question. Teacher involvement, administration involvement, everyone being kind to their kids. Carney can only be as diverse as its population. We are as diverse as our population. And I don't see a lot of issues within the district. There's, you don't hear of the fights that you see in other areas. I can remember being in junior high, my first day at a brand-new school, pull up to get introduced to the school and there are three kids at the front door brawling, I mean, brawling. Carney doesn't have that. It is a great place. That's why we moved here fourteen years ago. It's, it may not be the most colorful school, but it is a very, very inclusive place for you to drop your kid. You know they're going to be accepted.
Thank you.
Yeah, Carney has a lot of different diversity. I mean, and there are all types of families out there, single parent homes, you know, people who have a lot of money and people who don't have a lot of money. So there is a lot of diversity and it's important for us that we, that all of them feel welcome, no matter what their socioeconomic status or, or other situations may be. But for me, respect and decency start at the home. The school can certainly amplify that, but it's not clear to me when it became the school's job for parents to come and drop their kids off at school and then it was the school's problem to figure out, you know, to teach them from there. It, it starts at home. And so we can, certainly the school can be a part of it, we can amplify. I know we've had programs in the past and probably will have programs in the future to help with bullying and other, other problems like that. But to me, it's, it's an issue that really starts at home.
Thank you.
I would say welcoming the diverse population and, and like Jason said, diversity can mean anything. It can mean color of hair, it can mean the socioeconomic, it can mean a lot of different things. But how do we wel- welcome those differences and how do we celebrate the wins and successes of each person? So I think it's that way of two-way communication. If there's something happening or that my child's not respecting others, how do I know that as a parent? And how are we communicating that information back and forth between the schools and the parents? Because it's going to take a partnership there for those successes. But then also celebrating the wins. If someone has a choir concert outside of the school, how are, how are the schools recognizing that and sharing that with others to say, "Hey, you know what? This child's in choir and we're really excited about it and let's see what those celebrations are, how we can reward them for those, those wins that they're having in their lives." So I think it's just continual respect, it's continual being able to feel like they can open up and that everything that they're doing and we're recognizing those differences amongst the schools.
Thank you all for your responses. Mr. Hickey, what qualifications and ties to the school district do you possess to be on this board? And what community service have you participated in to prepare you for the service on the Board of Education?
Let's see, a little bio. I'm currently the seated vice president of the Pipeline Association of Missouri, which is a damage prevention and a safety, which allows me to meet with emergency responders all over the state. I've just joined the Common Ground Alliance Board, which basically meets up with all the excavators on that same aspect. I am a planner by trade. I do job plans. I build entire projects on how to work a job from start to finish. In my previous, previous life, I was a business owner. I ran my own construction company. I built houses, ground up for ten years, loved every minute of it. And it's the small things that make a difference. You don't make money if you don't know how to pinch your pennies and not cut corners, but do things right. All those translate well to the school board, especially the financial side of that and the planning. Everything needs to be planned from start to finish.
Thank you.
So I'm not from Carney, but I got here as quick as I could. I currently serve on the Board of Regions at Northwest Missouri State University. So I am a region up there, which is essentially a small school board. Well, it's a large school board, but have been doing that for eight years. I serve on the academic committee. I'm the chairman of the academic committee there. And we do a lot of the same things that a school board does, right? So I've dealt with the personnel, with curriculum, with budgets, have worked on that. I did receive my MBA from Northwest Missouri State. By the way, go Bearcats. And so that's something that I use a lot when it comes to reviewing financial documents. I, here in Carney, I served on the Strategic Review Committee in twenty twenty-two that put that plan out. And as I mentioned earlier, Christina and I served on the Boundary Commission just this last year. So I feel that the skills that I have would help translate really well to the school board.
Thank you.
I'm a pharmacist by trade, so I went through pharmacy school and I practiced pharmacy for about twenty-five years. And a majority of that time was multi-unit management, so overseeing about forty to fifty pharmacies within the local area. And it's a lot of listening and a lot of understanding and problem solving. And so really trying to understand what's the situation within your pharmacy, how can we continue to- we continue to be better for the community? How can we continue to provide that best level of service and care for our patients? In addition to that, I spent eight years on the Missouri Board of Pharmacy. And so I was appointed by the governor to serve a five-year term and then it extended additional three years. And I absolutely love being able to give back to the profession and to the community. And during that time, we were faced with a lot of challenges. It was when COVID came and we had to make some quick decisions that were faced with us of how do we expand the profession? How do we make sure that we're supporting the community and the needs that they have during that time, especially when pharmacists are sick and can't come in? And how do we keep pharmacies open? So definitely have that ability to come in and be a critical thinker, understand from the top down and asking those questions and listening to those answers and being able to kind of put together a plan that's going to be the best for the community and those that we're supporting.
First of all, before I went to chiropractic school, became a business owner here in this town, I spent 15 years as a, as an electrician where, you know, we had to run, we had to run million-dollar jobs and, and devise a plan to, to get those built. Like I said, I'm a business owner here, my wife is a teacher here, I'm invested in this community, my sons are here. And I've spent 15 years as a wrestling official for Misha. So I'm in and out of the different schools and talk to the different principals and athletic directors and coaches and, and have coached both youth football and, and baseball here as well. Member of the Chamber of Commerce, member of the Family Foundation, a member of the Quarterback Club. And so, you know, I think that, you know, everything that, that we do here and everything that, that, you know, is in, is in my bio revolves around these kids in this town and, and I'd sure like to find a, a different way to, to serve it.
Thank you. As for Jacob and I, during our time here in the Carney School District, we were unaware of who was on the school board and what was happening in the district. Mr. Clint, what actions would you take to decrease the disconnect between students and our school board members?
Oh, good question. You know, I think it's important for school board members to be active, to be visible, to be visiting the different buildings, to be visiting the different classrooms, the events that go on, whether it's football or whether it's tennis or whether it's robotics. I feel like it's important for school board members to be attached and understand what's happening in the school. So I would make it a part of what I do to make sure that I attended as many of those types of events that I could. You know, in the campaign, I've spoken to the PTOs. I think that's an important thing to do to understand, you know, talk to your stakeholders so they, you understand what it really is and isn't going on in the district. So I think it's up to the school board member to do a good job of being visible and being present and listening to all of the different various parts of our school.
I would say the key piece with that is making yourself available and attending as many events or activities as you can attend, communicating with many, as many different people as you can. And, and just listening to what their concerns are and asking open-ended questions. What are concerns that you have or what would you like me to know and understand? And so we may not agree, we may agree on those different things, but I want to hear what everyone has to say. I want to hear and understand those concerns so I can truly be able to take those to the table. I think this entire process, regardless of the outcomes of it, has been an extremely rewarding time for me. And I've been able to learn the amount of amazing things that the school district does and the amount of people that it touches. And I think even connecting with the students and getting their thoughts and their opinions has been very insightful. So regardless of that, I think it's been exciting and being able to have that opportunity to learn more and to dig in deeper. And I think the, the board members should continue to do that throughout the entirety of their term.
Thank you.
I mean, could you repeat the question? I could not hear you a minute ago.
Yes. I said, as for me and Jacob, during our time here in the Carney School District, we were unaware of who was on the school board and what was happening in the district. What actions would you take to decrease the disconnect between the students and the members of the school board?
I think, you know, I'll look at it from, from my perspective as, as, you know, my business sits right next to the, to the puppy pound. And, you know, we come in contact with 100 different people every single day. And so I can get 100 different opinions in that day. And, and, you know, I think that's a great thing because my, my opinion may be one thing and, and that day I may encounter somebody who's in my office who, who can change that. I think, again, being active at the different, at the different activities. If you're going to serve on this board or if you're going to be part of this district, I think you need to be, you need to be there, you need to support the kids, support the teachers, support the staff in any way that, that we can. And it could be a football game, it could be, it could be the, the play here or the different musicals they put on. There's so many different ways that, that we can interact with our, with our people. It might be, might even be at the grocery store and be willing to have those conversations. They may not be at the most opportune time, but I think be open to, to hearing that person out and, and then maybe scheduling a time to, to sit down with them or, and, and discuss it over, you know, some coffee or, or what have you and, and, and let them know that you'll always be there.
Thank you.
Volunteering, being at the football games, the track meets. There's nothing that says a school board member, I don't think there's anything that says a school board member cannot go sit in the lunchroom at a building and have lunch with the kids. Used to do it when my daughter was in elementary. It was fun. It was, it was entertaining and it was enlightening, the things that are said. I have no problem doing that, that sounds like a good afternoon for me. I've never done it at the high school. I think them kids would have more input, more back-and-forth banter with you. The junior high a little bit. I'm all for trying to get to know some of the kids, not just the parents. The kids are the product, the parents are the checkbook.
Thank you. We would once again like to thank all of the audience members, board candidates and staff members that have made this event possible. We hope that the information presented here will allow all voters to make an informed decision on Election Day. We also would like to remind all audience members that Election Day is Tuesday, April 2nd, and we encourage each of you to vote. Thank you.
April 8th, shit.
What? Oh, sorry, April 8th.